Call to order of our Bethel Park School Board Meeting on August 25th, 2020. Mr., everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. McCloslin, can we do a roll call, please?
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mrs. Dobos. Mrs. Dobos.
She can't hear anything.
Well, I know she's here. Mr. McGregor.
Is your microphone up?
Mr. McGregor.
Hey, I can't hear nothing. No audio, Ken. Someone getting some message saying they can't hear anything at this time. Stand by, please. Okay. Again, please, roll call, Ms. McCloslin.
One second. Okay. Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mrs. Dobos.
Here.
Mr. McGregor. Mr. McGregor. Mr. Nagel. Mrs. Rohl. Mr. Scalzo. Mr. Spicuzza. Mrs. Turner. Mr. Modra.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you, sir. At this time, Mrs. Dobos is unavailable to come into the meeting in public, and I will be sitting as the chairman of the meeting today. Our next item is a presentation from our school administration on the opening of the school year. Dr. D'Imperio.
Thank you very much, Mr. McGregor. I just want to start off by saying that I had the opportunity with Dr. O'Rourke I had the opportunity today with Dr. O'Rourke and Mr. Jan Sandy to visit four of our schools to determine their state of readiness, and I'm saying it because it's true. I never saw people working so hard in preparing for the opening of school. We'll be around to the schools that we missed today, that we ran out of time, but we will be there tomorrow. And teachers are working very diligently and so forth. So with that in mind, I'd ask the principals to be representative and give the board and the public just a brief update as to where we are with getting our schools ready for the opening. And I do want to thank the public for being patient. You will see now a flood of information coming out about how we're going to start and all of the requirements. Why don't we start, Teresa, with you and the elementary school program?
Thank you, Dr. D'Imperio. So the remote learning for grades kindergarten through fourth grade is gonna consist of English Language Arts, special areas, math, science, social studies, and a flex period for half an hour. Now, the management of the elementary schedule will be done by the classroom teacher. So depending on the master's schedule, the times are gonna vary. The computer times that the students will be spending in front of the computer will also vary depending on group instruction and independent work. Although the school day is from 9:20 to 3:30, there will be breaks off the screen for independent work and screen breaks as well. This chart was shared with the parents. It is on the website under Latest News and also available on Schoology once that is released to the parents. So they have different areas where they can find information about the daily schedule. The elementary teachers have also, when they pass out the materials on Friday, they will be including their welcome letter for the students, which will have login information. It'll have their schedule information. And one thing that's very important is the morning homeroom meetings from 9:20 to 9:30. That will give the teachers the opportunity to lay out the daily schedule for their class. So they're gonna know what they're gonna have, what specials, what times to log in and everything. That will be included. As I mentioned earlier, Friday, we will be having a materials distribution for all grade levels. Each grade level is assigned an hour. It's an opportunity for them to meet and greet as much as we can with social distancing. They're gonna drive through our circle, meet their teacher. We're gonna give them bags that have all their supplies in it. The supplies will comprise of Chromebooks for first through fourth, and we're working on iPads for kindergarten. They will also receive their textbooks and consumables and other materials such as crayons, pencils, scissors, glue sticks, whatever the teacher feels necessary for the instruction. As I said earlier, where can parents find information? It's on each school site under Latest News. And then also, each Schoology, each school has a Schoology page. So when parents log in, they'll see Ben Franklin, and right there, all my posts will be there for them to reference as far as updated news for them. And that's it for the day.
And Mrs. Dobos, just one question. And you were representing basically how the other elementaries are organizing as well. I know with the other elementaries, they have the materials set out and so forth. This is basically, but check the website for your individual building?
Yes.
That's what we're saying to parents?
The schedule is on there as well as the distribution schedule for each building.
Okay, and next, Kenny.
Can we ask some questions first?
Yeah, I had just one question, but thanks for describing it. It looks, you know, it sounds good. Can you just talk, and this is really kind of for everybody, because we've been getting a ton of emails over the last couple of weeks, mostly from parents frustrated they haven't been hearing anything. They're still, you know, they haven't been getting information. Can you just talk about kind of what the plans, because I think it's good for everybody here, here and on this meeting? Can you just talk a little bit about, you know, what's been communicated and what kind of communications are gonna be coming out, you know, during the rest of the week? Just to kind of, you know, make sure people are aware of the material pickup times or, you know, what does the day look like, you know, the first day of school? And, you know, that type of communication would be helpful.
Okay, as far as the student day, that will be shared in the welcome letter, which they'll get on Friday from the teachers with all the materials.
Okay.
The distribution was sent out. School Messenger, our PTO sent a blast. It's on the school website, so it's gone out. Parents did receive that. And did you have another question? Sorry.
I guess if that stuff is on the website, then if we get emails, we can refer people to the website then?
Yes, yes. And then as far as Schoology login for students and parents, that's forthcoming as well.
Okay, and when is that gonna go out, that announcement?
And so we're actually gonna put, we're gonna turn on Schoology for students or turn on the View Courses in Schoology for students on Monday. Now initially, we're going to ask parents to log in using their student account to see what the student sees. But we will be provisioning separate parent accounts. There's just a few steps in that that right now require time that we need to push forward a little bit.
Okay.
Okay, I have some questions about the timeline. As a working parent, I can't guarantee my child or any parent that has emailed me over the last five weeks can log in every morning at 9:20. There's daycare issues, there's all kinds of other things. Are we making adjustments for those children?
We have, and I've been communicating with my parents, and I'm sure other building principals have. I have asked them to email the teacher directly to let them know what their concern is or what their time constraints are. And the lessons will, they can make arrangements with the homeroom teacher and also the lessons can also be recorded so that they have that to reference.
But you just said we will not get our schedules till Friday. We can't log on to Schoology till Monday. How did the parents know what the teacher they have? Because I have a first grader, and I do not know who his first grade teacher is.
The...
It was released on...
I'm sorry, I can't...
Home room teacher assignments were released yesterday. It's on Home Access Center.
Okay, it's not, it's not there. And I'm not the only parent saying that.
Okay, for my, my building has it. I don't, it was released.
It was. So I don't know. We know that Home Access Center was turned on, I think it was two days in advance for the grades five through 12. But it was turned on for elementary, I think it was end of day yesterday. So it should be available for everybody. If there are specific issues where people can't see their child's schedule, we just need to know about it so we can resolve it.
What I'm saying is yesterday I was unable to bring up either one of my children's schedules.
Okay.
And I have one in high school and one in elementary school. And I am hearing from dozens of parents the same thing.
I have been getting emails, and I myself have been providing them with their username and their login and passwords. And I've gone in as well as a parent to make sure it was working, and it has been working for the ones that I troubleshooted.
Okay, the next question we have as parents that I'm being emailed with is, is this the schedule? So every morning, my child's gonna come in and have ELA and then have a special and then have lunch? Or is this just a sample? And each student, if I have a student in first grade, third grade, and fourth grade, is going to have a different schedule? Because that could send some parents' households into chaos.
This, these are just the main components of what the student day looks like. It's not necessarily that you'll have English first and then specials. These are just the different subjects that make up the elementary day. So they have different specials time. Their ELA math is going to be different.
So I could have a child have ELA for two hours. My other child could have a special and then have math, all going on at the same time. And I could have another child that's sitting, so one, two, three, and all are doing three different things that I have to keep them on task for, instead of trying to coordinate for these parents across the board and/or daycares that are going to be doing this.
That is what it, well, they are following the building master's schedule. So right now, each grade level's schedule is different.
I have, I have concerns about the whole thing, but I think I'm gonna stop and let them go on, and we can discuss it as this goes on.
Yeah, and just to make a brief comment. We'll modify as we move on, we'll correct as we move on. But do keep in mind that sometimes that's a next to impossible thing to do. Imagine school being open and all the children in school and say, well, gee, is every child in my family doing the same thing at the same time?
And I understand that, but we took a brick and mortar block schedule, and we're trying to fit that into virtual. And those of us that have been in the virtual world before know that doesn't work.
Yeah, okay.
So I would thoroughly encourage some of this because we're getting emails from parents that have two and three elementary students that have large concerns with what is put out.
Yeah, just, just one question on the, this, the, kind of the topic that came up about parents not knowing who the homeroom teacher is, or maybe it isn't in, online right now. Does this warrant another, do we need an email tomorrow, you know, letting people know? Like if they didn't get notified that their teacher was added to, what's the application again?
Home Access Center?
Home Access Center. That they should go look? Or that if they don't have it, you know, contact somebody, administration or building level principal? I just think that, you know, right now, over the next six days, we can't have too much communication, okay? Okay.
And we've been getting right back to them with that information.
Okay, just, I'm just thinking so people are aware that, hey, I should be looking. And then if there's a problem, here's who I contact.
Thank you. Kenny, do you want to give us, let us know what's, what's going on at the middle school level?
Yes, good evening, everyone. So I've been communicating with parents, especially starting last week when schedule was released. We released five to 12 schedules last week. I sent out a scheduling document similar to what I send every year to parents, kind of helping them through what the schedule looks like, how to identify what classes their kids should have on their schedules, if there's a problem with their schedule, what to do, to contact me. And we've had a number of parents who did have issues getting in, I think because the system was overloaded initially, because we released five to 12 schedules all at once. Since then, the numbers went down dramatically. We had a few today, and a lot of it's user error, forgetting passwords, different things like that. But the information is in there, and parents have been able to access it. I followed that up with an email about distribution. So we will have material and Chromebook distribution on Thursday and Friday of this week. The way I set it up was, I was hoping to get an opportunity for teachers and students to meet each other, at least in some capacity. So I was able to set it up based on teams. So the parents and students have been invited to come to the building during, for fifth grade, Thursday for an hour and a half session, and for sixth grade on Friday. It's a two and a half hour session because those teams are larger. So they'll be able to come in. The parents will remain in the lobby where they'll take care of the Chromebook distribution. So they'll fill out all the paperwork. I've sent all the paperwork out to them in advance, hoping that they have that taken care of. So when they come in, the parents will go there. The students will report directly to the cafeteria. My cafeteria is set up right now with a distribution center for each team. They have a set of tables where all the materials the kids will need to take home with them are sitting on the table labeled with the kids' final schedules and any information teachers are providing. I have a little bit of a scheduling dilemma within my building as I have an elementary, fifth grade, and a middle school, sixth grade. So that information, sixth grade is pretty simplistic, and I'll talk about the schedules in a minute. But fifth grade teachers are kind of doing the same thing that the elementary teachers are doing, where they're gonna put a note out to the parents that'll be included in that package about what time their child will be logging on for their core subjects. Their core subjects are divided between five periods during the day, and they'll be telling them what time they need to get on for all of those. All the other subjects are pretty straightforward, and they'll be getting on during the periods that are scheduled. I just sent out a communication before I came here with a reminder. I'm gonna have a makeup day on Monday for anyone who can't make it on the regular days. That'll be from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. because I know some people have trouble they're getting during the day. So I set up some evening time for parents to get in and get these materials and everything for their kids. All that information is also on the website, the scheduling information, the material distribution, and the day in the life, which I'll talk about shortly. As far as the schedule goes, students will come in, well, they won't come in. I wish they were coming in, but they won't come in. They'll log on during a homeroom period. During that homeroom period, they're gonna be expected to check in for their daily attendance. And that's something that has really just come to fruition in the last week or so. So we're still working on the classes. I set up an actual class for the students to log into, and they'll be doing that. Then they're gonna follow their typical nine-period day. So that's pretty standard. Sixth grade is pretty straightforward with their schedule. One of the things we're working on right now is the five-day-a-week classes. Your standard core subjects are pretty easy with the hybrid model. Some of the classes we're struggling with are the single-day classes, library, lift, band, strings, gate, fifth grade health. A lot of those classes are only offered certain days of the week. So we're trying, those teachers are all meeting now that they're in, they're meeting to decide the best way to try to make sure that kids are getting live whenever possible. So as far as what their day will look like then, I'll go ahead and jump into that. Once they log in and do their attendance for the day, they're gonna be logging on to their regular classes at the time that class is scheduled for. So if your first-period class is scheduled to start at 8:33, you're gonna log on at 8:33. At that point in time, the teacher will be there and have assignments posted. A lot of times, it's gonna be a WebEx meeting where you jump on with the teacher for a period of time, maybe 10 minutes, 20 minutes, depending on what the situation is. An instruction will be delivered during that time. The rest of the time might be dedicated to practice. It's the standard we do, you do, I do, we do, you do model. So they'll be working through that. The teacher will make themselves available to the students in some capacity or another, whether it be through live video chat or audio chat during that 40-minute block of time. In sixth grade, it's all 40-minute classes. Fifth grade, you have ELA as an 80-minute block and a, for math, and an 80-minute block for ELA. No one's gonna expect those kids to stay on for 80 minutes. So I think that that's what we were talking about, breaks and things like that. That's gonna be a big part of it. With the smaller groups based on the hybrid model, the teachers are gonna be able to break them down into really small, even smaller groups and work half the time maybe with the kids. So I think there's gonna be a lot more individualized attention than we typically get in a day, which will help move the curriculum along. So that's a big part of what we're gonna be able to do. But their core subjects are gonna look just like they would normally. The books and everything are going home. Consumable math books in fifth and sixth grade are going home. I mean, if someone can't make it in, I've already told people that I would drop them off at their house, whatever is necessary to get the materials to make this work. We did that with Chromebooks. All the principals were very good about getting those materials to the people when they needed them last year, and we'll continue to do that. So they do have breaks in their day. Fifth grade has flex where they'll do their band and strings, but they also would have time there. Their lunches will be their time. There's three minutes in between every class that they'll have their time. So I think that they're not gonna be sitting on the computer for seven and a half hours, and I know that's a concern. I would not want my own children doing that. So I definitely understand that, and I think that the schedule breakup will, well, for the students. I think that's about it. If there's any other questions or anything about New Armstrong, I'd be happy to address them.
I just wanna say that some of the emails we, I did receive were thanking your guidance counselors for making the schedule changes that were necessary. So, and, you know, this, if parents have some questions, this does show them how the child's gonna follow the schedule for the day.
Yeah, I think, and I'm gonna be sending more specific. And like I said, the fifth grade teachers, I think the sixth grade's pretty straightforward. It's gonna be more like your high school or your IMS schedules. Fifth grade is what I'm worried about. Honestly, the parents are understanding more. But like I said, my fifth grade teachers are great, and they're gonna send a lot of information out about, hey, this is what it's gonna look like. This is when we're gonna need you to log on daily and everything like that. So that's coming. Like I said, they just got in today, so we're working on getting that information out.
And are you also going to work with those fifth graders that have to actually go to daycare and those kinds of things?
Yeah, when I met with my teachers today, I had an optional teacher meeting today, and almost everybody showed up. And that was one of the big discussions we talked about was just the kids that can't make it. And a lot of the teachers were very open to recording their lessons and putting them up, more so than I even thought they would be. And basically, I said, if you're not willing to do that, you need to have the alternate ready for those kids in the evening, like the ones that are gonna have to get on. And even the attendance, we're gonna set it up so they can log on at any point in time during the day and still be considered present.
Okay.
That's really good to hear. Is that, is that consistent across other buildings also?
And here's, I wanna preface that. I mean, this is gonna be a work in progress. I mean, that's, but that is the plan, that we're able to let those kids access that information. Because that was a big complaint that we had last year, and I totally understand. This is one of those situations where you have a lot of people that do want their kids logged on at certain times during the day, and then you have a group of people that just, that doesn't work. And we totally understand it, and we know daycares really aren't gonna help provide that. So we've really put a lot into that. And the teachers are gonna get to know their programs, and it'll get better as we go. And that was part of what I shared with parents. I said, look, it's not gonna be perfect day one, I promise you that. But it will get better, and we'll do it together, so.
Is it, is that kinda, you know, you're all going kind of individually, but, you know, just like before in the communication thing, it kind of applies to everybody this year also. Is that, is that kind of consistent? Do we have that kind of, same kind of consistent approach to being able to address the instruction for those students that will not be able to log on live?
So for me, for IMS, you know, we have received far less to non-existent concerns about accessibility as much as we have about the A and B, like where their kids fall as we move into hybrid. I think for my level of student, they're to some point independent of some of those concerns that you're talking about. So when we talk about the consistency of things, I think parents' concerns, you know, from our level is, will my child be taught? Will they see their teacher? How often will they see their teacher? How often will they sit in front of the screen? So these are the questions you've been asking. These are the questions I try, I give the parents. So officially here this evening, and as we've done periodically through the past, you know, month, for us, you know, at IMS, it, it looks very cohesive, five through 12, frankly, six through 12 especially. For our students, we are, I'm putting out the expectation that they do get up at a regular hour, 7:20, that they're logged in at 7:25, that they do the homeroom attendance piece that we've put out. On their asynchronous days, I think we all understand there's gonna, there're gonna be some kids that don't log into their class right at 7:25. Do we want that to happen? We believe that that's a core piece of getting back on schedule, getting back on track. So when we get to hybrid, we're not reinventing that. We believe they should be getting up. We believe they should be taking home room attendance, 7:25, whether they're synchronous or asynchronous. I think for the most part, we have an understanding about how the A/B schedule works. A through K, Monday and Wednesday live. L through Z, Tuesday and Thursday live. We expect our teachers to be accessible to the students during the period of instruction on the live days. We expect the teacher to be teaching the students, be redirecting the students, checking for understanding for the students. What do our parents want, and what do our teachers need to be doing? And I think from everything I've heard from teachers, they wanna be engaged with the kids. Okay, they wanna be checking for understanding, not, let me know if you have a problem. You know, and that's the big piece, I think, that we wanna drive home. And from the teachers that I talk to, that's what they wanna give their students. So from that piece, I think the parents are gonna be, you know, happy with that. I think obviously, the, the point that's been tough to ferret out has been, how many days live can you do? And we all understand, we've scaffolded this at this point to scaffold teacher skills, scaffold students into the skills, the digital skills, the Schoology, the live instruction, the video conferencing. And we're gonna get to that hybrid, and I think we're gonna start hitting a pace. From, from the standpoint of communication to parents, I mean, I think that, from the level at which I could communicate things, I feel that we have communicated. I feel that the parents have received information such as, like we have all our Chromebooks out. We were able to get that out to the seventh grade who didn't have them at the time because we did a reclamation process to fix Chromebooks. So I think we're there. We are gonna do a materials distribution on Friday. But I gotta be very frank, we just don't have a lot of materials to give out because we've been digital for a long time. I mean, so a lot of our things are digital. I feel somewhat hesitant because some parents are gonna come up, and I'm gonna give them a notebook, you know, because we just don't have a lot. But to my math teacher's points, they really want the kids with the notebooks because they really want them embedded in that habit. So as we get back into hybrid, we're not rebuilding that, and I agree with it. So I apologize in advance if you come to get materials on Friday and you get a notebook. But it's what, it's what we believe in. I do have some other ancillary, you know, materials that are gonna go out, but that's gonna happen for some people. As far as where things are posted, I mean, you know, the day in the life is posted on the website. We also have some examples, some teacher examples of what asynchronous kind of looks like. I mean, synchronous, I think we have a good feel for that, I really do. I think teachers are gonna be teaching. I think they're gonna be checking for understanding. I think they're gonna be saying, look, you're gonna do this, and I'm gonna check back in with you in 10 minutes while I'm working with this group. I think that's gonna happen. I think the asynchronous stuff, though, you know, there's some examples provided where, you know, they get the 10 minutes. And not everything, 10, 15 minutes of instruction followed by the you do is not always online. Some of the examples that we provided are kids drawing bore models, you know, bore models for their, for their eighth grade science, physical science class. You know, so there's lots of things where kids do things that are not in, on the computer. So for that, I feel pretty good. I think they're gonna have breaks. Our phys ed teachers have talked about, look, do we really envision phys ed being sitting in front of the computer? I don't think that's probably what we want. We want kids to be mobile. We want kids to be doing something. So I think phys ed time, I think we want kids getting actually away from the computer. Now, they may give an initial, this is what I want you to do. This is what we're trying to shoot for. But I think we're gonna see breaks there. We're gonna see breaks at lunch, again, the pastime. And there's, there's gonna be breaks in the day where just frankly, some kids are gonna get done with things, and they're gonna be done until the next period. So that's from the middle... So that's from the middle school, from the seven, eight building, that's where we are. So any thoughts or questions?
I think I'm gonna throw the same question to you. Um, what happens to that child that, you're, you're, you're right, in seventh and eighth grade, we both have the same, you know, kids that age, have passed that age too, they're a lot more independent. Um, however, what happens if they are at grandma's because they have younger siblings and ca- just at times cannot make this? How are you gonna make that work to make sure that the attendance works for that child?
Well, for me personally, I'm not a punitive person. That's not how I'm built. So what I tell people is, we're gonna work with you. I mean, we're, we're not here to punish kids because of their situation. Now, I, I'll just be very frank, I have not had those emails.
Oh, oh, okay, I understand.
But if I do, what I'm gonna say is the same thing I'm telling you now. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to punish you or your child, I'm here to get them through. And that's what I'm gonna do. And I believe, you know, with a very high percentage, that's what my teachers are gonna do. So, anything? Okay, I'll pass it on to-
Just one sec, I forgot to mention this in the beginning for our public, viewing public at home. If you have any comments on any public, or the agenda items or at the end of the meeting, please address those comments to publiccomments@bphawks.org. You must include your name, your home address, and please limit your comments to two minutes, we will be, um, monitoring the time. Again, if you want any comments, please forward that address, or your message to publiccomments@bphawks.org. Mr. Valani, thank you, sir.
See, I had just, excuse me, one more comment before I forget this one. And again, this applies to everything, and maybe it's directed more towards, uh, Mr. Ryer, is what, what's the virtual platform that we're using to deliver the asynchronous instruction? Is it part of Schoology, or what, what is it?
So Schoology has its own built-in platform called Big Blue Button, and it's a basic version of Big Blue Button. And it works, um, as does Google Meet, as does the basic version of Zoom. But, um, a couple of months ago, I asked the board, uh, to approve WebEx, and the board did approve WebEx. And so we have WebEx licensing for every student and every teacher in the district, and that's what we're recommending that, um, our teachers and students use. And we're in the process of integrating that with single sign-on from within Schoology, so that, uh, they'll use the same user account and password they use to log into Schoology. And so, um, that'll be ready to go, um, by the time we get to Monday. Hopefully, it'll be ready to go for, uh, Thursday for teacher training on it. And, um, WebEx works really well, and has a lot of good educational tools in it. So, uh, we think that, uh, everybody's gonna be pleased with it, but there is some training that has to go on in order to help people get proficient in using it.
Yeah. I mean, it, it's a good platform. I think anybody even who's listening on the call uses it for work, it's, it's a good platform. If, um, it also lets you record what you're talking about without necessarily having to have a camera. I mean, you can just share your presentation and do an audio recording, you don't have to have a picture of your face.
And you can download those as MP4s, and you reuse them later.
And that was my question, though. It's a little bit cumbersome sometimes to download the MP4 files and post them. Um, I don't know if, what, what's our solution there? 'Cause sometimes those files get to be big if it goes on for an hour.
Well, we don't have a storage limit in Google. Um, and we have a very high storage limit for every user in O365. And so really, a teacher can decide to use, uh, either platform, um, to host things on. There's also space within Schoology that they can place those things into, so they can host them in there as well.
Do the recordings get stored also hosted on WebEx?
They are stored on WebEx, and Cisco will, because of our school agreement, Cisco, um, has given us unlimited storage for the life of our agreement, which is five years.
Okay. So you can share that link on Schoology, the, the link to the recording on WebEx?
I believe that you can.
We should test that out, 'cause it's gonna be a huge problem to download all those MP4 files.
I agree, we'll test it tomorrow.
And put it up, because, um, I mean, that's what we do where I work, is just send out the link to WebEx. Or, you know-
Yes.
And I think that would help parents.
Ron, I have a question. How much technical support, or how will you provide? Like, I'm thinking, I'm gonna have four kids, I'll be with two different grades. I run into technical problems, say there's a block in the, you know, you can't get on. What will be our avenue to get some technical support?
Well, our teachers that are here in the building, um, you know, our technical support in the building is the same as it, as it has been even during school, so we'll be good there. But, but at home, if a, if a child has trouble getting support, well, they'll have to escalate that through their building para, um, and the building para will help them, just like they did during the spring, and, uh, that was pretty-
They would call para here, is that it?
Yes. And that was pretty effective in the spring.
Okay.
The only piece I would add to what Mr. Ryer's talking about is the district did also invest in Screencastify, which is a web-based, uh, solution for screen capturing your desktop. And so the district has that license now, and so teachers are also trained on how they can leverage that tool, which also saves in the Google Drive, and is available via link, not download to view, so.
One recommendation I have, 'cause I deploy a lot of systems like this, is, don't use that. Only reason why, I don't even know what it does, but get the choices and the tools down to as few as possible, and come up with a ten-step process of do this, do this, do this, do this. You know, I think, and, and so, I, I don't wanna get into, you know, my recommendations of the technology, but just at a high level, keep it simple, keep it consistent. Okay? Otherwise, you're gonna create confusion. Okay? 'Cause everybody's got five days to get their stuff out. Keep it simple, limit the number of choices that people have, and keep it consistent, and give them guidance. Ten steps, do these ten things, boom, 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 done.
Yeah, we agree.
Okay, Mr. Ryer, one more question going forward. The Big Blue Button, will teachers be ta- shown that prior to Monday as parents are getting on?
Well, Big Blue Button is integrated within Schoology, so it's, it's on the left-hand side with all the resources. If they just click on it, um, it pops up and it allows them to schedule or start a conference right there in real time.
Okay, we may want to send out some kind of step-by-step process for that, so that teachers know how to use it, and can show parents how to use it.
Okay. One of the, one of the things with Big Blue Button is it only saves, um, the recording for seven days, because it's the basic version. So, um, it, we're still hoping that, that teachers choose WebEx, um, and that's what we want them to use, because they can keep it indefinitely.
Okay.
Good evening, um, just following up on Mr. Patterson and Mr. Minch, they did a great job. There are many consistencies in the five-to-twelve plan. Mr. Minch, uh, did a wonderful job, and in his presentation shows some of the different types of learning styles between synchronous and asynchronous. Um, just wanted to point out and note and direct, uh, the board and as well as the community to the updated presentation on the website, as well as on the Bethel Park High School main page. Uh, one of the big things, uh, that I wanna cover is the scheduling and different times of programs. Uh, one of the things that have gone out, in addition to our Chromebook distributions, um, are different vocational schools and those programs. Uh, two of the three have begun. The final program is beginning Monday, the thirty-first. As you look through the presentation, uh, we are adhering to the similar schedule. We have discussed and spoke to the point of the different, um, A-B days broken up on the alphabetical, um, cohorts there with A to K and L to Z, uh, with the staggered schedule. Similar to the middle school, we are adhering to the regular bell schedule. Uh, the high school, one is posted on the website, that is our seven twenty-five start, first period start in seven thirty-nine. Students will attend school remotely following that schedule, and on the synchronous days, they will have that live interaction access with their teachers at that time. Uh, one of the questions posed is about screen time. Obviously, many of our students are, are used to that, and if they're not on their computers, they find themselves on their phones, even at home at times. Uh, so with that, uh, there are built-in breaks with the pastimes, study halls, and different, uh, lunch periods and opportunities. So we are, when we are in the remote option, uh, students will have downtime and breaks, uh, free flex time to complete work and complete other assignments there. Our classes will be accessible through the Schoology platform. Uh, we did just mention some of the tools, uh, for the synchronous and live portions. Whether those are linked directly into Schoology, that will be an option, so students will be able to join in either big groups or small groups, uh, depending on the type of instruction. Again, the synchronous learning, just to highlight, could be a number of things. It could be discussions, explanations, it could be workshops, it could be labs, it's opportunities for students to engage with the teacher, it's opportunities for students to engage with other students. Uh, it could be direct instruction, it could be follow-up, it could be remediation and extension. It's all the great fundamental techniques that our teachers are typically accustomed to doing. Having the schedule on an A-B or every other day schedule also creates a greater level of consistency at the high school level. Instead of going five days without seeing the students, they see their students every other day. So even if we took the technology component out of it, it's, almost creates the opportunity for flipped classroom or blocked scheduling over two days. It, it really does develop, uh, an experience where teachers can instruct, they can extend, and they provide many different learning opportunities. Uh, during this remote learning, while we're at home, those opportunities are going to be done remotely over the computer. So while the synchronous work, the asynchronous work could be preparation, it could be extension, uh, and, and different opportunities within that platform. Looking at asynchronous learning, or for our, uh, remote students, uh, again, we also want to have students create structure and have certain routines in their day. Obviously, that's not feasible for all students, uh, so on those asynchronous days, there is flexibility on when they access, uh, complete and submit their work. As for attendance component, I, I will explain that a little further. Um, i- it is being rolled out shortly, but we are creating grade-level, uh, attendance classes that will be on the Schoology homepage, where students, whether they're in school synchronously or asynchronously, will have an opportunity to enter that class, complete a form to demonstrate their attendance for that day, uh, as we monitor that attendance. Again, giving flexibility, uh, on those asynchronous days of when they access it, but obviously, we encourage them to, to be responsible and, and to stay up on their coursework so they do not fall behind, uh, or do not miss deadlines in accessing their learning. Uh, touching on the vocational school day, so, uh, correspondence did go out to the families at the end of last week. Uh, it was a little short notice for the Western Area and Parkway vocational schools, but, uh, with our Director of Transportation, Mr. Zeele, we were able to coordinate, and we actually started, uh, transportation, uh, this past Monday for some of our students, 'cause they went back in a hybrid, uh, option. So Parkway, they returned, they did set up a hybrid schedule. Because we have a small portion of students that go out to Parkway West, um, Career and Technology Center, they are having all of our students, which is approximately thirteen to fifteen students, go out on two days. Their schedule is in-person hybrid, uh, based on social distancing with other partnering schools. Uh, they set up schedules for our students to go on, uh, Monday and Tuesday. Asynchronous for them is a, on Wednesday, and then they will have synchronous learning on Thursday, Friday. Our, our primary partner, Steel Center, which we send about seventy to seventy-five students in those programs, uh, their schedules are also up on the PowerPoint here. They will start school next Monday, and what they did was, and, and this was some confusion, and I received some emails on this, they broke up the schedules with their partnering schools based on their schedules. So they designated Wednesday as a asynchronous off day at their school, uh, but at the same time with their partnering districts, they tried to adhere to their, um, schedule. So we were going Monday and Wednesday, and Tuesday and Thursday. Because they had Wednesday off, our Monday, Wednesday students will go two days a week in their hybrid form on Monday and Friday, and then our Tuesday, Thursday will go Tuesday, Thursday. So typically, uh, like any other day, our vocational students will attend their morning classes based on our BP schedule, like any other student. Um, we are offering transportation. Uh, students had the option of remote learning at the technical schools, or a hybrid, uh, and then they had the option of transportation, or if the parents wanted to provide transportation and drive their students out to the school. Uh, again, this was based up on adhering to their hybrid numbers. This was not solely because we're sending them on this breakup, they wanted to do that. And the other schools that are sending their two are also splitting their kids in half so they could adhere to the numbers, uh, in their plan and safety plan for the hybrid return. Western Area, we have a small portion of students that go out there, uh, currently under their model. They opened up in, uh, what they call the green phase in their safety plan. Uh, they are accepting students daily, but it is smaller numbers, uh, and they do have components. All three of the schools do have some kind of additional learning platform for the synchronous and asynchronous learning. Steel Center is using Canvas LMS. Uh, Parkway is using Schoology, as we are, and Western Area utilizes Google Classroom for theirs. But right now, with the in-person instruction, it's primary there, Google Classroom is their extended part there. Uh, one of the things, just to highlight with what the day looks like, um, and this is up on the website in the presentation, is by establishing this remote, uh, schedule, I wanna just reiterate the flexibility and the transitional ability we have here at Bethel Park, uh, based on the conditions and situations. With the remote schedule and the hybrid schedule, uh, reflecting each other, it provides us a smooth transitional plan when it is deemed appropriate for us to return to school, uh, and to do that. Again, uh, attendance, uh, technology went out. Uh, teachers returned today, and I just wanna reiterate from the high school staff, uh, what an amazing day it was having our teachers and faculty and staff back in the building. Uh, there was a tremendous en- energy, to reiterate what Dr. Imperio said, uh, and, and it was just great having them back in the building, uh, for the first time since March, all in, uh, one, one group. Uh, there, there's definitely a lot of excitement. Uh, I know there's, uh, concern, and there's, uh, reservations as we entered this year, but one thing I am confident in is what our, our staff and faculty is able to do, and I really think we're gonna put out a tremendous product. And not only are we going to rise to the occasion, but we are going to exceed all expectations. Uh, at the high school, we are gathering some materials. Most of our resources are online, uh, but any of the books that do not have online versions, uh, we are looking and aiming for a pickup on Friday, but because of the numbers and things, it might trickle into Monday of next week as well for a pickup. And a lot of that has to do with sometimes with English novels, and, uh, some of those things that are not, uh, copyrighted or online versions in our primary textbooks that we have, some of the additional materials we use in those classes.
Yeah, okay, so the A-B schedule is consistent, and I think parents are liking that to where, um, you're, you know, you're hybrid or you're remote, and you're consistent on the days that you're synchronous or asynchronous. Um, I also need to give you kudos, Mr. Valani. Um, apparently, you guys have been inundated with schedule changes, 'cause they came out a little late. So you're, between you and your guidance office and your choose, you know, your new, uh, assistant principal, apparently, parents are quite happy, but it takes a little time to get into that system.
No, I'm glad you said that, and I, I don't deserve any of that credit. That is all the counseling department. Uh, they, they have done a tremendous job. So we were able, uh, with some other staff in, in producing, getting the schedules out, we did put those out at the end of last week as well. Um, just to touch on those, you know, there are certain things with study halls and home ru- and lunches and free periods that sometimes don't show up, uh, because, you know, we assign, we mass assign home ru- uh, study halls, and then we drill them out to specifics. So sometimes, there might be a gap or two. Uh, obviously, we did send out an email, and we set up Google Calendars, uh, for appointments. Our counselors went straight with appointments, um, from seven to one today, they did it yesterday, they're doing it the rest of this week, Monday next week, uh, in addition to responding to emails before and after those time periods. Like I said, a tremendous job. It went really well today, uh, where we were mass scheduling students, having virtual meetings, and each counselor, whether it's their student or not, were meeting with these students, getting those schedule corrections, and getting them, uh, ready to go. So it really is kudos to that department, uh, in what they've been able to do. And an, an additional thing is, you know, the appointments have been filling up. So one of the things we're going to explore, in addition to, you know, this week, we had new students on Monday, we had tenth, uh, eleventh and twelfth graders on Tuesday and Wednesday, ninth and tenth graders, Thursday, Friday, makeups on Monday. We are looking at adding additional appointments and slot running into even Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, in addition to our traditional ten-day add drop once the semester starts. So, uh, because of the successfulness of the virtual appointments, we're gonna continue to offer those into next week as well. I'll send out additional correspondence, uh, when those appointments are available to log in and sign up for on that Google Calendar.
Okay, could we just make sure that parents understand that whatever Google address they put in, they need to be using that Google address to set up the calendar, because that, I guess, was not totally clear as to if you're using your address, but you're trying to set up your child's appointment, and the Google addresses are not matching, you don't get an appointment?
No, that's great to note. We had some challenges two weeks ago when we sent out and required students to log in for Chromebook signups, and parents wanted to sign up. It was about 150 emails. So we did open it up to parents, but noted, we'll mark that on the next sendout so they know to sign up through the student account so it can be accessible through the network.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Jansani, he is our COVID Coordinator for the district, which we are required to have, and questions have come up about how will the district monitor the conditions in the district? And I do have a question also for Mr. Fierce about that, and just a brief one, but Dr. Jansani, how will that process be monitored?
Thank you, Dr. DiNperio. First of all, I just want to reiterate what we've been saying all along. I think we've been pretty consistent with the idea, the notion that, you know, our plan, as we've seen before we really engaged the plan, has changed a couple times. And that's because we want to make sure that we consider the data that's available, but we also want to build a program that's not only germane to Bethel Park, but makes sense for the students and the staff, because we all have to work together in making this be a positive experience for kids. So with that said, I think if we focus just on the numbers and what other, I mean, you can look across Allegheny County and look at all the different plans, I believe that we might be the only plan that starts school remotely the first four weeks, only one that I know of. We see many, many that start the first nine weeks. Some have even said the first semester. We see some schools that are going to attempt to do a full five day. Not many out there, but there are some. There's one that borders Bethel Park in Washington County. They're starting a full five day. And when you look at the Washington County numbers as it relates to Pennsylvania, they're step in step as far as the current progress with positive cases and the percent. Allegheny County is slightly higher than the Pennsylvania, you know, numbers. When you look at Pennsylvania, it's about 3.4%, which is positivity rate, and Allegheny County right now is 3.9%. But also know that those percentages and those rates are really based on a seven-day quorum of dates, or the last seven days. So our last reading was really August 20th, and here we are, obviously, on the 25th. So in two more days, we're going to see another rate change as far as posted on the websites. The websites that people, all the parents and community members can look and find the data, Pennsylvania puts out, the Health Department puts out, they have a dashboard that shows the current daily occurrences of number of people being tested, the number that are positive, the number that are greatly hospitalized, those that are on respirators, those of deaths that have occurred. All that's out there for folks to digest, as well as the Allegheny County does a very similar step to what Department of Education, excuse me, Department of Health is showing. Allegheny County does their own Health Department dashboard with the numbers. So with that said, I just want to, you know, say that we don't have a crystal ball here, and we really don't want to guess, and we don't want to put students and faculty members' health at risk. We're erring on the safety side, to be honest with you. Right now, we're just under 4%. 5% really is, you're compelled to do the hybrid and not full, between 5 and 10%, you know. Below 5%, you can go full. Right now, once again, this week, we're at 4%. So it's a moving target. We've been saying that all along, but I just want to make the point that we are going to evaluate. We've given some tentative dates. Our first tentative date is October 5th, that we are going to attempt to do the hybrid model that Mr. Valani, Mr. Minch, everybody's talked about. We're going to attempt to do that, but if something occurs between now and the next five weeks, which is four of those, obviously, is student attendance, you know, we have the ability to adjust. Also, we believe that starting out in the remote fashion and really getting proficient with that learning management system, coordinating with families, working out the technology issues, all the things that go along with the remote aspect, we're going to be in better situation to go to the A-B schedule, to go to the full schedule. To start full, like we originally intended, you really only have one way to go, and that's, you know, to hybrid into a full remote if the numbers start going erratically or start showing that there's a concern. Right now, once again, we believe we're in the best situation. Go from the remote for four weeks, and then we can go from there.
Thank you, Dr. Jansani. Mr. Fierce, I know in some communities, and I think in ours as well, there have been some concerns about the buildings being closed, and just briefly, you and I talked about that last evening. What have we done to monitor air quality, water quality, and so forth in all of our buildings during this period?
Well, for air quality, we have changed all our filters throughout the district, and we have upped our outside air intake to have the most common and frequently occurring air exchanges. Also, when it comes to the standing water, and I've noticed some other districts have had issues with standing water and some kind of bacteria floating around, we are actually in the process of disinfecting every single water supply in the district. And I have spoken with our district environmental consultant, and he strongly believes just with the disinfecting products we have on hand, we have nothing to worry about. Everything is fine, everything is always tested out perfectly, and we have no issues whatsoever.
Oh, thank you very much.
I have one question. Dr. Jansani, when you had said we were at 4%, is that the Bethel Park number? Because I understand that PDE-
Bethel Park's a little lower than the county, yes.
But the county yesterday was over 6%.
Yes, and two days ago was 12%.
Right.
So, I mean, this thing's up and down. So remember, they're doing it in slates of seven days, and they're taking the average over seven days and creating that percent.
But we, as a school district, will be following the Allegheny County guideline numbers as percentages, as addressed by the Pennsylvania Department of Education and the Pennsylvania Health Department.
Yes, we're compelled to follow. We reside in Allegheny County, we're compelled to follow.
What I'm getting at is Bethel Park's not, school district is not doing the municipality numbers. We are using the county numbers, which is done by-
Yes.
-a medical doctor that is looking at how many infections we had compared to how many negatives, and how many tested.
Correct, yes, we're using those numbers. Thank you.
At this time, I have, Mr. Spicuzzo has a question for you, Dr. Jansani. Go ahead, Russell.
Remember, 5 is kind of the magic number, and when you're above 5, if you were consistently above 5, then the most that we're recommended to be utilizing or teaching students at would be the hybrid model. If we approached 10%, and like I said two days ago, the county was 12%, that was 67 reported cases, and 12% were positive. So once again, we're really going to, you know, weigh it out as we go along, and to answer your question, we're using the Allegheny County numbers. Bethel Park is lower. We have a very low death rate, we have a very low positivity rate, but we surround all the folks that average it up and above our numbers.
You know, I think it's worth maybe noting for everybody, just so we know where all this data is coming from and where the metrics are, but I believe in terms of the levels, is the, there's a page on the Department of Education called Recommendations for Pre-K to 12 Schools. That has the three different levels of transmission rates and what the recommended instruction models are for each one. So there's a low transmission rate, moderate, and substantial, and that's on this page for determining instructional models during COVID-19 pandemic on the Department of Education. Between that and the statistics that are reported on the Department of Health website, that's where the decisions are being made from, or they will be made from as we change instructional models.
And, you know, those are the numerical values and numbers that we're considering, but also we've considered our ability to be versatile and go in a direction to educate kids without great disruption. That's why the remote aspect, starting out, getting that down to a science, is going to give us the most versatility to go up or down based upon the numbers. Hopefully, the numbers go down and disappear. We'd love that to happen, and we'll be in better position. And, you know, we're going to use that learning management system, even if we're back to school five days a week, we're going to use it and use it well for students. So there's a lot of value to be gained by starting out the way we are starting out. And I commend the board and the administration for that approach. I think it's a great way to handle it.
I have a follow-up question by Mr. Spicuzzo for you, Dr. Jansani. Go ahead, Mr. Spicuzzo.
Thank you, Mr. Spicuzzo. That's a great point, and, you know, we like to be first, at least we're trying to be first right now with the low numbers. I think that's great.
At this time, Mr. Scalzo has a question about training for parents. Mr. Scalzo, go ahead, please.
Well, I think the training is going to come in a couple of different modalities. There's going to be self-paced training that they can go through. There's going to be an after-school webinar that they'll be able to attend that would be live. And then, you know, beyond that, there may be some additional training in the buildings by the principals. So that's where we're at right now, and we're still developing that, what that's going to look like, but yes, there will definitely be parent training for WebEx, or not WebEx, but School G, sorry.
Do we know the date?
Well, it won't be until we turn on the access, so it'll be no sooner than the middle to later part of next week, and I think a better target range is probably the week after. But the parents will be able to log in as their students before that, and students will receive instruction from their teachers during their class periods.
But I think what Mr. Scalzo is asking about is, you know, there's going to be a Day One next Tuesday-
Yes.
-where students are going to have to get online, and if their parents can't help them, they're not going to be online. So is there something that we could do Monday where we have a WebEx or a kind of test the instructional day via WebEx, all the tools that the students are going to use, using the students' accounts to teach everybody together, the parents and the students, how to use that, and, you know, even record that, make that recording available to other parents who have not, who were not able to attend the live session? It seems like that's something we should be able to do pretty easily on, you know, Monday or even Friday of this week.
I would have hoped they would go in bags on Friday, too, on a screenshot session so parents can do a one-to-one. So in those bags and in the things that we're giving parents on Fridays in most schools, there is a PowerPoint presentation on this is what the screen looks like, this is what you do, this is what the screen looks like, this is what you do.
I actually think, so I, and sorry to, you know, interrupt you, Vince, but, you know, I know a teacher pretty well, and she showed me School G, okay? And actually, I was really impressed. I think it's really easy. I think you need a 15-minute WebEx to show people how to just get into the system.
Don't you have a parent-
We have a parent video right now.
And how do they access that? Go to Mr.-
Well, we can send that out through School Messenger so that parents can have immediate access. It's on YouTube.
Is that one that we've created, or is it School G?
Well, there's a School G created one, which is really, really good, but there's also a couple that have been created internally, so.
Okay, I would say, I've looked at the School G one they created. It's interesting, but it's not what our parents want. Our parents want to know, what does the Bethel Park experience look like? How do I get my child into the environment? Okay? And, you know, so from the time a parent and student sit down at their home desktop or their Chromebook that they have, what buttons do they press to get into the classroom view for the student? And then how do they get into WebEx? I mean, that should be a 15 to 20-minute video. You don't want to make it an hour. 15 to 20-minute video for how they actually get going.
Well, I think we could work together and put that together and make it available for the parents at the beginning of next week.
Beginning of next week doesn't work. School starts Tuesday.
Yeah, they- Well, Monday.
Monday, I don't, I, as a parent, am not liking Monday.
Sooner the better.
Sooner the better, yeah.
Well, do we want it before the parents can log in?
Well, if they can log into their child's account, obviously, they have to have access somehow, maybe not their account, but their child's account. So is that Monday, you said?
Yes.
Okay, then it has to be Monday, but we maybe need to send that out as a communication to people to say, hey, be ready Monday, you're going to see this video, maybe even opportunity to join a live, you know, session, however it is. But it's another communication need to just put it out there, tell people when they're going to see their instructions and how to help their students access School G.
Okay. The typical process is the building para process that's in place. We have teacher trainers who will be available to help teachers. I'm not, you know, I think that that's important for parents to be helped. I think that, you know, teachers are going to play a big role in that. There isn't a dedicated function for assisting parents, but I hear you asking that there maybe we need to think about that. Very good. We'll put together a plan, and it'll include, I think, an intro of that School G video and the ones that we produced internally, and then, I think, the follow-up with the WebEx training next Monday. And, you know, for follow-up, we'll figure out a way for support. They can always call their child's building, and the call will be routed to, you know, appropriate resources within the building or within our department in order to resolve their issues.
Mr. Ryer, the only thing I'm going to remark on that is William Penn only has a part-time para for technology, so we may want to look at that over the next day or two to see if that is what we need, especially if, I understand it's a smaller school, but if parents need the help earlier in the day or later in the day that they're not there.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board members? Okay, that being said, we'll move on to our next item, number five. Attempt to adopt the agenda for the business items. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Was there a motion?
There are, oh.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. At this time, we'll take a vote, Mr. Scalzo.
Voting is open. I think, there it is.
You got to get on the, you have to get into board docs. I am in board doc.
Mrs. Roll?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
The next item is approval minutes of the regular meeting on July 28th, the regular meeting on August 4th, and a special meeting for general purposes on August 11th. Make a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Spicuzza, second by Mr. Christensen. Mr. McCoslin will take the vote.
Voting is open.
Did it work this time?
Mrs. Roll? Oh, got it. Motion carries.
Next agenda is announcement on executive sessions. The school board met on August 4th for personnel and legal matters and to receive information. August 11th for personnel and legal matters and to receive information. And then August 25th for personnel and legal matters and to receive information. That is a non-voting, that just did not sound right.
Uh huh.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is public comments for the agenda. As we stated, if you have a comment, you send it to publiccomments@vphawks.org, name your address, and there's a two-minute limit. At this time, I think we do have a handful. I'm seeing, go back to the 20th, there's one?
I have.
I have, well, we don't have an address for that one parent on the 20th. And it goes up to?
I don't have one.
Mrs. Sarah B. on the 24th?
That's what I have. That's the first one I have.
That's the worst one I have.
Sarah B., anybody who wants to start?
Do you have an address? Okay, I'll start. Sarah, Sarah Braham, 3953 Mimosa Drive, Bethel Park. Hi, I have emailed in the past with my concerns over only two synchronous learning days. I was very happy and grateful when I saw today, Monday, that the elementary will have four synchronous days. I feel it will give the students the best chance to learn and make a connection with their teachers. I do hope the other schools decide to go to four synchronous days as well. My daughter is going into fifth grade at Neale and deserves four days of live instruction. Three days of asynchronous learning is not enough to learn new concepts and be guided by their teachers. I also request that teachers will be in their classrooms to teach, providing the most in the classroom feel, allowing these teachers to be surrounded by their resources and to have the teachers' resources and to have their teachers' main focus.
The next one is Susan Miller from August 25th today. Susan Miller, 2040 Rolling Green Drive, Bethel Park. Attention board members, please ensure that our children will receive full five-day-a-week instruction during the full remote instruction dates, September 1st through October 2nd. High school students should have to follow a brief TESL schedule, at least 15 minutes per subject each day. Please do not allow instruction to occur only two days a week with the remaining five days being on their own to work independently. The need, they need the guidance, instruction, and interaction with their teachers in real time. Please do not let our children down. Thank you for your time and dedication to our community staff and students. Kind regards.
Okay, the next one is from Jessica Montesano from 5899 Keystone Drive. Once again, chaos reigns in Bethel Park. Here we are with a week to go until school begins, and the plan changes yet again from two days to four days synchronous, at least for the elementary students. I am not willing to accept, at this point in time, that it's chaos with all our region's school districts, as evidenced by my social media feed yesterday, filled with others beginning their first day as planned, either in person or as neighboring districts, Peters did, hybrid or remote. These decisions, these plans should have been made at least a month ago and communicated accordingly. We are approximately five months into this pandemic, with it staying around for at least a foreseeable future. This did not come out of left field. In the spring, yes, but now I am baffled as to why the administration and the board delayed decisions-making regarding this school year's plans and given us ever-moving target. I prepared at the beginning of the summer for five days in person, as was announced, though recognizing that may have not come to full fruition. Just a short weeks, a few short weeks ago, we were told very full remote with two days synchronous. Now I received an email just yesterday afternoon about four days synchronous, one day asynchronous, as well as the Chromebook pickups, which in my opinion should have already happened. This district lack of commitment to a plan has been a slap in the face to us all, and especially to us working parents. Even more so that those of us who work outside of the homes, such as myself, we needed this decision and information sent to us weeks ago so that we can make the appropriate arrangements. We are already under duress with helping our children succeed in their education when we are not there to facilitate remote learning and relying on others to do so. Other districts made a plan, stuck with it, not Bethel. I'm also quite disappointed to email this administration and board yesterday morning with frustration that no information had yet been disseminated to us parents regarding the school year. As of yesterday morning, with the week to go, I only knew that it began September 1st. I did receive a prompt response, however, and it was from my daughter's building principal to whom my email was apparently forwarded. With all due respect, principal is not making these decisions about the upcoming school year. They are disseminating information that went indicated from higher up. I wanted to hear from you as my frustration and disappointment is directed towards the district's administration or board, not the principal and staff at my daughter's elementary school, too, I have nothing but love and appreciation for. And we're at two minutes. Who are we next?
What's the next one? Bradley Fitch. Dear Bethel Park School Board, my name is Bradley Fitch. I live at 27 Conestoga Drive. With the start of school approximately a week away, I'm worried that we have received very little information about the new year. My wife and I both work, and we need to make preparations and balancing work and childcare. We received an email this week about picking up materials, but no information about the daily schedule other than a time to log in, what we are responsible for, or any other pertinent information. I assume some of this information will be the materials we are picking up, but we will not be getting those until a few days before school starts. I understand the challenges exist, but I don't understand the last-minute decision-making and communication. Perhaps things like shipping delays, perhaps things like shipping delays would not be quite as challenging if the board made a better decision, better decisions earlier. Trying to work out a schedule with employers or forming a pod with the other parents before the start of school is almost impossible because no one knows what is going on. I know our family is not the only one struggling with this, and I wonder if anyone on the board has young children or households where a parent or other caregiver is unable to stay home with the children. I have to assume the answer is no, because the decision-making of this board is not setting the students up for a successful year. I would like the board to explain how parents are supposed to make arrangements on less than a week's notice. It is important to know that I do not blame the teachers, principals, or anyone else at the local schools. They work toward the best interest of the students and have to follow decisions made by the board and the upper-level administrators. I support the remote learning at this time, but the 11th-hour decisions are causing confusion and irritation to everyone involved. The schools went remote last March. You had ample time to prepare for this year, but that time was wasted, and now the teachers, students, and families have to pay for it. Thank you for your time, Bradley Fitch.
All right, I think the next one's from Carrie Ann Starr, 836 Frederick Drive. How many more times are Bethel Park Elementary families going to be expected to pivot for yet another change in the district's plan for the 21 school year? Yesterday, eight days before the school was rescheduled to start, the elementary school sent out a plan which is vastly different from what was shared at the August 11th board meeting. August 11th was already late in the game. However, this last 11th-hour change is a slap in the face to working families who have scrambled again and again to make suitable arrangements for their children's remote learning. This plan is not the schedule or model that our families contemplated when trying to cobble together our work-home-school balance for this school year. This bait and switch leaves us very little time to organize any viable alternative education plans for this year. Moreover, it was communicated through an email, which was firstly focused on material pickups and not communicated clearly, with no acknowledgement that this is a significant change over the prior plan. There was no transparency and no opportunity for parents' input in the process. The slides presented at today's meeting had little to no useful information to help a family work with how the synchronous and asynchronous components will flow together, leaving us with only more questions and uncertainty about the breakdown between the instruction and independent work. We have no clear picture about what expectations are, other than listening to morning meetings. Because the day's schedule is going to be shared at the morning meetings, we have no ability to plan for the day, the week, or the month. Moreover, we still know nothing about what the software interface will look like or how assigned homework is to be completed. I am losing faith in the district and the board. While the subpar planning and organization are disappointing at best, the lack of transparency is disturbing.
Next one I have is from Kim Sharneki from 5864 Bryan Drive. The current requirement for in-person learning, both full-time and hybrid, given by the PA Department of Education, is incident rate of less than 10%, positivity rate less than 5%. Allegheny County incident rate is currently 7%. Allegheny County percent positivity is currently 3.9. Bethel Park has approximately 32,000 residents, and according to the Allegheny Health Department, has a total of 126 cases of COVID-19. As Bethel Park does not appear to be following the PA Department of Education guidance for instructional models, can you please elaborate on what metrics you are using to determine which instructional model to use to adjust instruction models?
Um, yeah.
Nathan Graff.
There's no email, there's no address on that one.
He has right under Surry Woods.
Nathan Graff, 1060 Surry Woods. Since the board has continuously described? Okay, I'll start over. Nathan Graff, 1060 Surry Woods. Since the board has continuously described the decision for how schools will be run this year as fluid due to COVID-19, I am writing to inform the board that I am still very disappointed with the decision to not offer a five-day-a-week of in-person education option. As you know, this harms the education of thousands of students and the job status of hundreds or possibly thousands of parents. I am also writing to inform the board that due to recent PA mask order qualifications and decisions being made about sports, there is even more reason to make changes. To many of us parents, the solution to this situation was simple. Offer five-day in-person education to those parents who are not concerned to send their kids to school and offer a remote option to those parents who are concerned. For parents who choose the remote option, having a webcam turned on in each of the classrooms during the class would offer the next best thing to actual classroom participation and would prevent teachers from having to juggle all of the new complicated plans being put in place. It's a shame the school board is going down the path they are, because the longer they go down that path, the more ingrained this convoluted way of doing education becomes. As of August 17th, the Director of PA Health clarified that children must wear masks at school all day except when they take a 10-minute break, when six feet apart, or eat and drink six feet apart, or when wearing a mask is deemed unsafe. This even furthers the point that the school board should not use their desire to keep the children six feet apart as an excuse to run the hybrid option starting in October. The reason for the hybrid option was to space kids out more, but now that masks must be worn anyway throughout the whole day, there is no need to keep kids six feet apart. Secondly, recently, parents have been signing health waivers to play sports. As we all know, 70% of Bethel Park parents want their kids back in school five days a week. If the school board is afraid of risking our kids' health or the health of their families, why can't we do the same thing as those parents and sign a waiver? As a last point, I want to remind the board that they have said that they want to try to get our kids back in school as soon as it is safe. And if that is the case, why isn't following PA orders, which allow kids to be back in school five days a week, sufficient for them to do so? I invite any board member, parents, or students who want the school board to offer a five-day-a-week in-person option for our children to join the Facebook group, Bethel Park Brick and Mortar Education. Again, that is Bethel Park Brick and Mortar Education.
Next one we have is from Stephanie Ferguson. I'm not going to read it. On fourth, Mr. Verlani, I think, will you take a look at it? And please, in touch base with the family, probably answer her questions, achieving her concerns. More about a scheduling issue at the building.
We're up next with whom?
What's the next one? Amy?
Amy?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to try this. Amy Agestini? Are we good on that? Are we close?
Agastoni?
Agastoni, 157 Spartan Drive. Dear School Board, my daughter is enrolled in PM kindergarten at Memorial. Will she be required to log into the class meeting at 9:20 a.m.? Or is that for first grade plus and not kindergarten? I'd also love to hear, if it hasn't already been addressed in the meeting, what the opt-in, opt-out timeline looks like for staying in the virtual learning platform versus attending in-classroom when and if the hybrid platform opens? If I am not ready in October to attend the hybrid platform, will I be able to opt into November, December, et cetera? If we decide to remain virtual learning platform, how will the experience look for my child versus those children in the classroom? I am concerned that teachers will not have the bandwidth to provide live instruction to my virtual child by teaching two cohorts of the children in the classroom. Lastly, are you placing desk shields on the students' and teachers' desks? I've heard other school districts are doing this.
Next one I have, Mary Stoner, 4965 Brightwood Road. I am well aware that there is no easy or perfect answer to the challenge of educating students during the pandemic. I have waited patiently, doing my best to give everyone involved in decision-making time to research, plan, and implement new ways of providing high-quality instruction to our students. I consciously decided to give the district a chance to show me that they would rise to the new challenges while understanding the issues faced by families who have all their own unique struggles with life changes in the time of COVID-19. And one consistent thing that the district communication has mentioned from the beginning of the planning process was flexibility, so that each family could figure out how to support their students as we head back to school. In reading through the Day in the Life presentation from the high school, the one thing that seemed to be completely lacking is flexibility. Having our students tied to their devices for the totality of their normal school day is no way a flexible situation. As a single, self-employed, sole-income earner and a single parent of two high school students, both with IEPs and their own learning challenges, I'd like to know how this model accommodates the needs of not only our students for instruction, but also our families who are trying to maintain their jobs, take care of their families, and juggle the needs of multiple students. While many children are older and I do not need daycare, they will be unlikely to be able to manage what seems to be the daily expectations for staying on schedule, completing independent assignments, and keeping up with their classes without significant supervision and assistance. I am really disappointed to see that the Day in the Life seems to be simply recreating what the school used to be in a virtual format. We have many teachers, staff, and administrators who I am sure could be really innovative in creating and solving these 21st-century challenges while inspiring our students to participate in a meaningful, high-quality model of education that offers our kids what they need to be successful, but still give our families flexibility as we reimagine education in the current times. I would like to hear more about how the needs of individual students and families will be accommodated so that I can make the best choices for my children as we move forward. Thank you.
Rachel Sada of 5536 Saddle Brook Drive. Hello, I'm a mom of incoming first grader, and I was wondering if it's possible to use our own Chromebook in lieu of the provided device? Unless there's a specific reason why we need the school-issued Chromebook, I'd prefer to decline so that it could be given to a student in need. I'm going to, I don't know, break from tradition or policy here, but that seems like an extremely frequently asked question. Can we respond to that one now? Because I imagine there's a number of parents who...
So technically, a Chromebook will work on our network, even if it's not part of the Chromebooks that are...
But I guess just to answer this question, can they use their own personal device to access the network?
They can, they can use their own device to access much of what the district has. Some of what we have, though, is... Some of what we have, though, is actually bound to our domain, and...
So maybe what we could do, because this is going to get pretty technical, I think, so maybe if we can just provide a response to that on our website tomorrow, I think that'd be good. Because this is, I think, especially now with parents wanting to do a pickup, can, maybe, maybe it should come from, you know, building principal or something like that, but if we can at least provide some people some guidance to this question, because it seems really important.
Mr. Patterson, go ahead.
I apologize for chiming in, but I did put in my letter today, because I've had that question a number of times. One of the things that it really helps with, as far as the building and providing those Chromebooks to the students, is that we have a piece of continuity for the teachers. If there's tech issues and things like that, a lot of times the teachers, if it's the same Chromebook that everybody's using, the same device, it allows the teachers to kind of figure out some of the issues that may go wrong. And also, it provides our parents and texts and everybody else that opportunity to help with that. If it's a cellphone device, then it's going to be a little bit harder for them to troubleshoot what's going on and everything. So I recommend it to my parents. I'm not requiring it at this point in time, but I did recommend that they do take one of ours. Just, and I did say, hey, if it's, something's not working out, you can always come get one later, but I did recommend that to my parents. I just, the tech support's a big part of it, though.
Right, okay. Well, if we can just come up, I mean, that was a good explanation. If we just come up with a policy? Again, the reason why I wanted to pause is that this is one we need in like 24 hours, so people can decide if they're going to come and pick up the Chromebooks or not, or, you know, anything like that.
Go on.
Okay. I can take the next one, too, because that was a short one, so, because I like to talk.
Go ahead, Barry, because I guess the next one's a...
So, Ken Bush, 898 Clifton Road. What is the plan to train students and parents on Schoology prior to the first day of school? When will there be communication with the district regarding the first day of virtual learning? Instruction on where to begin, how to begin, how it will work, et cetera? I have a child at IMS and went to high school, and we have heard nothing from any teachers or administrators. The first day of school is September 1st. Now, less than a week away, parents need to be able to get organized and prepared for the first day of school. How are we to get our children ready for the first day, when we ourselves do not know what is happening, how it is happening, et cetera?
Okay, this one, there's two of them, and we'll go, we'll read both of them, because they're short. It's from Gina Conroy, 1324 Bethel Green Drive. Reason why we're not using synchronous learning from the beginning? It seems you have all the technology that would be most effective for those who could be there. Please explain. And then, she's down here, too. In addition to the information below, can you please be more descriptive in how a high school student's day would look? When will they get their login site? How are periods determined? Is there an email site or a hotline the students can report when a teacher is not effectively teaching? Students may not be willing to approach the teacher. Also, can you please address what has been done to ensure the system will not crash from too many online? That's been a one that's come up a lot, also. And then she says, "As a parent of incoming senior, I am concerned with the latest reopening plan. Why, I believe it is prudent to push back the start of this school year, since the teachers have not been trained on how to use the latest technology. I am concerned about the following areas that is a steward of our taxpayers' money and our students' education, and the health and well-being needs to be addressed. What is meant by asynchronous learning at home? The last semester did not advance or prepare my senior for college, and with the handout pages and individual learning, videos were not helpful, nor did they provide a strong basis for his college years. Is synchronous going to be live in classroom instruction? Is meant by workshops? Are the teachers not going to conduct classrooms? If we are virtual, why can't all students have live classrooms for all their classes? Virtual programs like Zoom allow for unlimited live classes? Does Schoology not allow that? If not, why? What training is being provided to teachers? I would strongly hope the start of the school year is not being delayed, since they have not had any training on recent purchased products. How are teachers going to effectively teach our children if they are taking care of their families? What policies are you implementing to ensure that they are all teaching our children? Many parents have worked during COVID-19, and those parents have defined childcare for their children, including daycare. How will this affect the student's ability to participate in athletics? This is an important part of the mental and physical well-being of our employees, and this should not be discounted as a nice-to-have. I personally have seen my son, who is depressed like many of us over this virus, once he was able to start training for his fall season, his outlook became positive. While I understand this is a fluid situation, you have had four months to propose a plan. This one is vastly different from the one proposed in July 28th, with two weeks prior, the difference from hybrid approach inferred on August 3rd. Our students deserve much better than the plan that is being proposed to the taxpayers."
All right, next one I have from Kelly Rose McCann, 2463 Bethel Church Road. Hi, thanks for addressing these comments. Appreciate the work you all are doing within this difficult time. One, a couple of questions. One, I've heard several times now that we are working on iPads for kindergarten. Can we please clarify tonight what that actually means? Will kindergarten students have iPads at the elementary distribution on Friday? Will they have the ability to log on the very first day of school? Two, what if students are available for a portion of the day, but need to do at least a few periods on their own based on a parent work schedule? Or what if we can manage to log in for homeroom most of the time, but have a few days when we can't? Should we be emailing teachers about that now, even if it may be more sporadic? Three, will NAMM's orientation be scheduled virtually for parents? It is very unclear on some of their items, on their schedules, or not on their schedules, and what these acronyms actually mean for parents, the new fifth graders, i.e. LIFT, TCAP, et cetera. A virtual orientation or back-to-school night would be so helpful ASAP to help our new middle school students be successful. Thank you. Any insight on, on her questions that I'm wrong about the...
They came here with a question.
The iPads.
Yeah, I don't know. We're working on the iPads. There's a lot of work to do to make the iPads work, and right now, we're working through prioritizing the other things that have to be done in order to make Schoology ready for our parents and students for Monday. So our goal is to have iPads ready Friday, but that is not set in stone at this point in time.
For kindergarten children?
Yes, for kindergarten children.
Okay. Next one, Jennifer Jaglowski, 6662 Chapel Drive. Thank you for your presentations of each school's remote learning approach. For the students with IEPs and asynchronous learning, it is not an appropriate learning style for them. How is Bethel Park supporting these students? Thank you.
And from Jennifer, there's a second email. Hello, first, I apologize if my questions and comments were just previously. There's a lot of confusion, particularly with new families starting school here. My family, for instance, has a kindergartner starting, and this is their first experience with the school district. There have been comments mentioning how such-and-such will be like it was in the spring. For each member, though, that many of us did not have that experience. Also, new families did or do not have access to eSchool Plus. Luckily, when I emailed Darla Morrow, she was quick to send me a password. This was today. I heard on this meeting tonight that you assumed everybody had this access. I still have many friends with incoming kindergarteners that have no access to that system and did not even know that the system existed, or that this is where the schedules' teachers are listed. Please make sure to have better communication with families of new students. Imagine the nerves you felt when your child first entered school, and multiply that by 100 with what is going on in the world now. Finally, I have two questions. There's much debate and confusion over this on various Facebook groups. When we start remotely on September 1st, we are synchronous Monday through Thursday and synchronous on Friday? Or we follow the same schedule as when we are hybrid? Two days synchronous, remote, and three days asynchronous, remote? Can any family choose to have their student remain 100% remote for the school year? What is that remote option like? Will the students be taught by their assigned teacher? Any synchronous learning? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have one. Heather Brown, 198 Grassier Avenue. My freshman daughter has received an email about signing on for Schoology. My junior son has not received anything yet. Please advise when all children will receive their login information. Also, I would like to know how the electives, such as woodshop, ceramics, and weightlifting, are to occur to the level that the children deserve while being virtual.
Next one, Kelly Chapman, 3230 Eastview. Extremely concerned parent of special needs child. I can somewhat understand as a human about waiting to return kids to school, but as a parent, and with all the talk of the low numbers, I can't understand why these children are not given the opportunity to go to school five days. Obviously, being the parent's choice, there is plenty of ways to social distance, and the teachers will already be there teaching. There are a number of other schools letting these children attend. I can tell you for certain that my son cannot and will not be able to log in and work online live or independently, not to mention work, and he has to attend a sitter two days a week. So will he be filled for the first four weeks? How will that work? A live pair will not help. I'd like someone to tell me how my son is supposed to get an education. I guess my only recourse will be to pull him from the district, which I moved to for the education. This is unacceptable, unacceptable for my son. He deserves and needs help. Thank you.
Okay, I think this is the last one. It's Candy Bush, 989 Clifton Road. Has Vicky Flota's position been filled? It seems as though the district is having major issues with the communication, especially with the pandemic. Current plans for the start of the school year, et cetera? Replacing and/or filling the public relations position seems to be even more critical and should be filled sooner rather than later in order to help this horrible situation. Waiting until the day before school starts to share information and Schoology training videos is totally unacceptable. So very disappointed in this district. I can tell you that your first question will be answered shortly.
Sure. See, one request that I have, there was a lot of great questions in here. I think there's a couple that we kind of paused and responded to, but there's a lot of other great questions that probably every other parent listening to this and not on this call probably has the same questions. Can we have somebody go through and put together an FAQ document that we post based on these questions? Because we didn't get a chance to respond to them, but there's some very good questions. And now, you know, we heard the plans from the building principals, so I think we're in a better position to respond to these, but I think it would be a good point to build an FAQ list on our website, probably, so we can continue to update it as more questions are asked.
One second.
There's another comment. You want me to read it?
Is that from Ms. Ferguson?
No, it's from Marcia...
Go ahead, please.
Go ahead, we don't have it.
We don't have it. Go ahead, read it, Ms. Dobus.
Marcia... Sledzakberg, 5851 Bryan Drive. I'm concerned about the technology keeps including Schoology in attendance. Can you please provide a tech support phone number? If your child is having trouble logging into the system, a teacher can be able to stop class to help an individual student with tech issues. I'm concerned if the students only have 10-minute windows to log in. Some parents are not going to be able to children. I'm trying to coordinate the schedule for children in three different buildings. I don't see any information about this live session being reported in order to access this information later. Is it disappointing to be able to have some children return in the hybrid method while some choose to stay virtual? If some of the students have created and entered Schoology lessons and will give kids access to now, do they start going to Schoology and look at real items? Thank you. So I agree with Mary about the fact that maybe we need a FAQ page for even interest, and I'll make it forward some of these questions, and I'll let you probably comment on it forward, and so maybe we come up with some, I don't know, a fact. The one thing that I was also listening to is, is there a lot of questions regarding parents? So I suggest that you have some kind of a contact from the principal or something as a parent.
I'll read it.
You know, the brand new, brand new parent. So that's just my suggestion.
Okay, Mrs. Dobus, since you've been talking, we got one more in. Rebecca Walker, 5984 Puddingstone Lane. I am thoroughly confused by the additional information provided today. I was feeling a little better until I watched this meeting. There has been no meaningful communication to parents about what needs to be done. This is my first time I have heard that we will now have live WebEx, Screen, Classify, whatever that is, in addition to Schoology and Google. I do not know which of these platforms my children's teacher will be using for which purpose. WebEx may or may not be coordinated, be coordinated with Schoology. Lack of training information on these platforms is extremely frustrating. As per usual in Bethel Park, little or no consideration has been given to working parents, with the exception of Mr. Patterson at NAMMs, where I no longer have a student, scheduling more convenient pickup times. I have now had to take multiple days off to arrange for Chromebook pickups at different buildings. Now there are material pickups at IMS on Friday, which I was previously unaware of. I still have no idea how to coordinate my work schedule, so that I can effectively help my children. I have not been informed as to my IMS student's group to know which days he will be asynchronous. I learned yesterday that my elementary student will have some level of synchronous every day, which was, again, new information. Please get the information out as soon as possible. I think that's it.
I believe that's it, so we're going to move on with the agenda at this time. Mr. Scalzo, would you please go over the curriculum committee?
Okay, under curriculum committee, we have one item. Independent studies in art. The board, school directors approve the administration's recommendation to permit student number 00387 Knox will be a senior in the 2020-2021 school year to conduct a independent study in art under the direction of Bethel Park High School Art Teacher and Quality. Will her warrant be ready for this study?
Thank you. Motion to accept.
Second.
We have a motion to accept, and a second by Ms. Walsh. Any discussion? No? And we'll go for a vote.
Thank you.
Next is up, is the Personnel Committee. Mr. McGregor.
Yes, it's always a short one for me. There are nine items on the agenda. First one is the July and August 2020 salaries. That's very, um, approval. First one is approval of the extra duty responsibility program for 2021. Number two is the acceptance of resignations that are classified. Number three, approval of staff changes. Four, appointment of personnel. Five, change of assignment. Six, approval of the title of non-advisory officer. Seven, approval of state and state something coordinator. Eight is the approval of sabbatical leave of absence. And nine is the termination of a non-professional employee. If there are any members of the board who might be holding out some of these.
We need to vote in each one. We need to vote on each one.
I'd like to second all of those.
All right, we motion with the second. We do vote on one by one, correct?
I can record it for you, if you want to do it. I mean, I'll just plug it in.
So right now, the approval of the extra duty responsibilities for the 2020-2021 school year? Any, no comments? We're ready for a vote.
Voting is open.
Next will be the acceptance of resignations.
I think we just voted on all of them, didn't we?
I thought we went one by one.
You can vote on all of them if you wish, and then I'll just record it.
Yeah, I was assuming we were voting on all of them, since we moved all of them at the same time.
Right, Darren moved all of them, and seconded all of them.
All right, so they're all closed.
I think I had a question about what they were voting on. You can have all of them carried.
At that time, so they're all, okay, so they're all carried at one time, correct? Ms. Clausen, right? So we just did it, then, correct?
That is correct.
At this time, I'd like to introduce our new Public Relations Information Specialist, Mr. James Cromie. James, would you be willing to come up and introduce yourself to the Bethel Park community?
Use the microphone.
You're good, right there. Look that way.
The camera right back there, above the exits.
That should be secure. Yeah.
My name's James Cromie. It's a real honor to work for Bethel Park. It's a bigger honor to succeed Vicky Flota, who I've known for a very long time, and for whom I have a lot of respect. And it's clear...
It's a real honor to work for Bethel Park. It's a bigger honor to succeed Vicky Floda, who I've known for a very long time and for whom I have a lot of respect. And it's clear that there's a lot of communication challenges right now facing all school districts, not just Bethel Park, and jumping, it's like, kind of like jumping on a moving train. But we'll get through it, and we'll work together. And the passion that you see for children's education, not only amongst the community, but amongst the staff has been very impressive, and it's going to be exciting to be a part of it.
Thank you. Welcome to the community. As you recognize, you have big shoes to fill here. And as you heard tonight, there's a lot of work for you to get going on. So sooner the better. Next, we'll move up to our Finance Committee, Mr. Christensen.
So in the Finance Committee area, there are eight items. Would anybody like any of these held out before we move them? No? Okay, seen none. I move to adopt the July and August 2020 salaries and bills, the July 2020 financial report, awarding the bus tire bid, awarding of transportation equipment, transportation bus runs, approval of student services contracts, approval of cost district agreement for special education, and items declared unused and unnecessary.
All right, we have a motion. My Mr. Christensen, second. My Mr. McGregor. At this time, Ms. McClosman, please open up the vote.
Voting is open. Motion passes.
Ms. Walsh, would you be willing to take the others, please?
Yes. The approval of the revised phased school reopening health and safety plan, and the approval of the emergency instructional time template.
Motion was made, second by Mrs. Dobus. No comment at this time, Ms. McClosman. Put them up for vote.
Could we just?
We clarified.
Clarify the change to the safety plan? I think it was fairly minor, wasn't it?
Yes, it's just basically about the new regs that changed last Friday regarding face masks, when you can wear them, the 10-minute break and all that. It's highlighted on page 35 and 36 of the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, the voting is up on our screen. Thank you, sir.
Motion carries, 7-2.
So we're going to public comments at this time, and I'm just rebooting to see if we got anything else that came in. I do not see any after Ms. Walker. Anybody else different?
No, that's it.
At this time, it appears there's no other public comments. Board comments at this time? Mr. Spicuzzo, any comments, sir? No.
Is he on mute?
I don't know.
All right, I was muted.
There you go.
Great change there, so. No, I have no comments other than I would ask the administration to continue to follow the numbers. Be diligent, find a way to get our schools open as quickly as possible, or at least in a hybrid situation at least. And thank you for all the work that everyone's done today.
Thank you, Russ. Mr. Scalzo.
No comment this evening.
Thank you. Mr. McGregor.
I, you know, I just want to say that I certainly understand the frustration that parents are going through. Yes, we could have done a better job, didn't we? Always playing cool talks earlier. But I also want to say that I know the administration is working early mornings, late at night, taking home calls, taking coffee with other superintendents of the personnel. There's a lot of, a lot of moving parts, and it's, there's no structure going on. But believe me, I didn't know about my kids fourth grade either until yesterday, too. And so personally, I was frustrated with that, but yeah. We're just going to have to take this, you know, week by week, and then hopefully work for the parents, and hopefully that the kids develop some good skills out of this COVID that they're experiencing. This is the first time in a long time that this generation or any generation has to experience something like this. And I applaud parents and grandparents and family and friends or their members to ditch in. I think that's just phenomenal, and I think the Bethel Park community is going to rise up and declare victory soon enough over this pandemic at the life of this.
Thank you. Mr. Nagel.
Is he muted?
Trying to see. Ms. Ruhl.
I'd just like to say that many people were concerned about Steel Center and the students getting their practical experience, but some of the companies that we work with have stepped up and will be providing them some hands-on experience so that they can meet their hours. So that's a good thing. Also, they'll be ready to go at the scheduled date to move in out, and we will be providing bus transportation for those students. The other thing is just to give you a flavor of where we stood as a school. The Allegheny Intermediate Unit, we met last night, and the numbers that came out of that meeting were that 22 schools were going hybrid. That's at the moment. And 16 were going remote. So we're like right in the mix. The Allegheny Intermediate Unit is really trying desperately to staff the waterfront learning because they've had so much requests for assistance from schools to use their online academy. So they're working diligently and under the new director. We have provided Chromebooks to several districts that financially could not fund them, even under the care of that. But they've really been really busy trying to meet all the needs in the county. There are some schools that really aren't going to maybe meet payroll. I mean, they've been impacted so bad. So it's been a big effort from them to work with the schools. And they'll be providing other training, too, as necessary, you know, through the rest of this year. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Walsh, turn around.
I'd like to thank Mrs. Dumont, Mr. Minch, Mr. Patterson, and Mr. Valani for attending tonight. I strongly urge you, based on the emails we've read tonight and the emails we have forwarded all of you, to please look towards options for parents that have to work and options for elementary parents that are, that are broad. Most of you know I have one in high school and I have one in elementary school. The high school one can work independently. The elementary school can't. So parents, and I have two working parents at home, a husband that is also working from home, the stress is there. I know I've had a conversation with Mr. Nagel also. The stress is there. We need to make this as stress-free as possible for parents over the next couple of weeks. We also need to work with transportation with parents over the next couple of weeks for situations where transportation is needed. So I'm going to urge you as a parent, as a taxpayer, as a Bethel Park alum, we need to do this Bethel Park, and excellence in education is where it needs to start.
Mr. Christensen.
Yeah, I just wanted to, and I mentioned this before, but I just wanted to kind of let you know, because I've been beating you up a lot, but we're getting beat up also, and much of it is deserved because we are late getting this all worked out. But I do have to say that the work you did over the summer selecting Schoolology, Mr. Ryer, Ms. O'Rourke, Mr. Gensany, and the teams that you brought together, you did do a lot of work, and it maybe is not visible to people, but I think it will be when they start their classes. I think it's a very good platform, very usable. I can see that being a long-term part of our instructional mix that can, even when we're back in the classroom, help us deliver complementary learning and instructional support, you know, even when students are at home, doing their homework at night. I think that, you know, what you're rolling out here, and as staff goes through this transition of also thinking about the digital learning combined with classroom instruction, I think is going to make our overall academic program even stronger, okay? And I encourage you to do that because this, this tool that you're selecting, there's no reason why you can't also use it as a part of the classroom and give students the option to do learning any time of the day when they're doing homework or whatever. So anyways, a good selection. I like it a lot. I think parents and students will find the same thing.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Dobus.
Sorry, I was muted. I just want to thank all the teachers, staff, and administration for all this hard work that they've been doing over the last couple of weeks, last couple of months to make this opening of the school happen. It's been, it's been difficult. I know, there's been lots of conversations, but I think that everybody was risen to the occasion, and I think we will, I think we will be fine. And I also want to thank the parents for all your emails and comments and criticisms because you put it right there in the forecourt for us. As, you know, your valuable comments sort of leak in. We can't maybe always answer them right away, but we can start to find out what the answers are or direct them to the people who can answer their questions. Because this is going to be a process, and I want everyone to understand that. It's a process. Even the opening of school is going to be a process for the first, you know, a couple of days, maybe even a couple of weeks. We're going to have some growing pains. It's not going to be perfect at the very beginning, and I know, you know, I'm not making excuses, but as with anything new, we'll have some hurdles to go over. But from the principal's comments and how they're contacting parents individually and talking to them, I just want to encourage the parents to, you know, go on the websites, go on the elementary websites, and if you have a specific question, you know, reach out to the person who can answer that question, and they will get back to you as has been shown from the comments and so forth. It's, and people refer to the fact that, you know, we did this in spring. We should be perfect now. Well, this is an entirely different interval right now. We're doing it in an entirely different way, and it's going to be so much better. So, but we will have some growing pains. And I also want to thank Mr. Muddrak for taking over the calling.
You're here. I cannot add anything more to Mrs. Dobus, what she had said, because I think she nailed it with her comments. So at this time, that's part of the meeting. The motion is adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Second, all right. All in favor, say aye. We're going to vote.
Doug's going to make it official.
Doug, make it official.
Come on, Doug, you're keeping us here.
I'm sorry.
And we're done.